Okay, welcome. Before we get started, there's quite a few people on the meeting for tonight. So if you could just make sure that if you're not speaking, if you can mute your phone, that would be awesome. We'd appreciate that. And I'll just give you a moment to do that and then we'll begin the meeting. All right, Holly tells me she's ready. So we'll begin the meeting. It's Tuesday, October 27th of 2020. This is the city council meeting. And the first order of business would be the roll call. Holly?
Boersma.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Ely.
Here.
Hirsch. Hirsch. I see her, but I don't hear her. But I think Regina's here.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lookaki.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Tokowski.
Here.
All right, we have 12 alders present.
All right, thank you, Holly. Next item of business would be communications. Do any elders have a communications? Hearing none, I believe we have communications from the clerk's office. Holly?
Okay, so we are officially one week away from election day and the mayor asked me to give a quick update on the election and voting here in Stoughton. So as of this evening, we have 4,829 ballots returned in the city. And that accounts for 54% of registered voters. So 54% of registered voters have already voted. Of that, 797 were in person here at City Hall and then 4,032 came through the mail. The last opportunity to vote before election day is this week. So we are open 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week. If anyone needs to come in to vote and/or register, you can do both the same day. And if voters still have their ballots at home, please get those back to us as soon as you can. Ballots do need to be returned by election day. So by 8:00 p.m. on election day. So those need to get to us the sooner the better, just so you leave yourself enough time for those to arrive. If you're going to put them in the mail, the post office recommended that the day would be the day to get it in the mail to ensure it got back to us. We do also have a 24-hour lack drop box outside of City Hall. So if you want to bypass the mail, you can stick it right in the city's drop box. And if there are any questions regarding the election or voting, I'd be happy to answer those.
The Whitewater Park. And I'll put them on the screen here and we'll go through them. There's several that wanted their comments read. So I'll start with that. And the first one was from Sharon Fulbrick. And Sharon is opposed to the Whitewater Park. And the comments are, I'm opposed to the project at this time. We are in crisis currently with the increase in COVID-19 cases. And we should not take our efforts and concerns away from this. I oppose going forward with demolition of the dam as there will be contamination, waterfall, water inhabitants, environmental concerns with raising and lowering the river. This will also affect property values that could be negatively impacted. I fear this will raise taxes significantly and I fear there will be minimum revenue. The next one is from Cheryl Lern. And Cheryl's also opposed. I'm opposed to the removal of the dam and creating a whitewater park. The people of Stoughton decided in 2009 to spend thousands of dollars to completely rebuild the dam. I see no purpose in spending thousands of dollars to tear it down now for questionable benefits to the city and many disadvantages to the river, the wildlife, the entire ecosystem along the river. It is questionable that the Whitewater Park is going to be as advantageous to Stoughton as proponents think it will be. It is going to be a relatively small park compared to the other existing parks and not a very convenient park being split by the street. People may come here once or twice to try it out, but it will continue to draw, but will it continue to draw a lot of people? It's also questionable whether it will be the boon to Stoughton businesses that planners think it will be, especially businesses downtown. How much shopping do people that come to these types of recreational spaces actually do in the local store? Then there's the issue that this rapid water will be flowing day and night will be dangerous temptation to kids. Of the most consideration, removing the dam is going to change the river and ecosystem along the river. It does not just belong to Stoughton. It is very selfish of Stoughton to consider building a whitewater park for dubious benefits for itself without considering the impact this will have on the people that live along the river. The people that use the river and the wildlife that also calls it home. The impact will be widespread affecting people outside of the city of Stoughton as well as people in Stoughton. Everyone affected has a right to be involved in the decision. The next one is from Jim Corano. If the dam is removed and the upstream river conditions degrade, there is no way to undo the damage. We residents from the from the upper Yager River have seen the negative impacts when the water level was not controlled by the Stoughton Dam. Water was drastically decreased upstream. Is it fair that the city of Stoughton can make decisions which can affect residents outside of the city? And any residents who enjoy the river in its current conditions? The whitewater kayak park is a draw for a select group of people. It does not benefit the many other residents and visitors who enjoy canoeing, kayaking, hunting, fishing, and bird watching with our current river. The next one is from Jennifer Went. Thank you, Stoughton City Council for the opportunity to comment. I live on the bay. For anyone who don't know, the bay is what we call the lake-like area of the Yager River near the intersection of Highway B and N. When my husband and I moved here to the old neighborhood about five and a half years ago, it felt like we were becoming members of the Stoughton community, being so close to the actual city, using the many stores, restaurants, amenities, et cetera. In fact, the home we live in was one that was destroyed by the Stoughton tornado in 2005. And our home's address is the actual address used on the Setnamaya canoe race instructions for the starting point. It is only this last year that we realized that while we may have felt part of the Stone community, Stoughton does not feel the same. It seems like Stone only cares what up to its city limits. I have no real voice here, although I do appreciate the ability to comment. And I hope that the council and Stoughton understand that we feel a part of your community and we are close enough that actions on shared resources should be careful and coordinated. I'm talking about the Whitewater Park and dam removal project. I just want to preface things by saying that I want Stoughton to flourish and improve. I just want to be sure that upstream areas are not negatively impacted by changes to the waterway. As I mentioned, we live on the bay. The bay is a much-used resource, not just for residents, but a lot of others. For the last few weeks, I've woken up to a course of shotguns as hunters from from enjoy the plentiful waterfall resources of the bay. Over the last year, I've seen tons of kayakers enjoying the wildlife and many people fishing. I often see groups or individuals stopping at the canoe lodge just to take photographs of the bay and its wildlife. So I worry, will the proposed changes to the river and with the whitewater park and dam removal affect the bay? I'm told by many long-term residents of the Bay Area that they think it will. That when the dam was renovated, the bay levels were reduced afterward. That there were times when the dams were miscoordinated and the bay drained quickly to leave stinky mud flat. The bay is shallow and reduction in water levels can impact it significantly. Living here in high and low water times, just in the last few years, I've seen it. Even a small change in water levels can make a big change in the shoreline. So I'm concerned, a lot of my neighbors are concerned and tell you the truth, we do not feel we can trust the figures in the whitewater park packets. Those figures have changed. Little detail is given. The source is suspicious. It seems to conflict with the current dam water level orders. And it just seems like not enough study has been done. The biggest question is, what if they're wrong? What if the figures are wrong? What if everything goes to plan, but it turns out the water levels upstream are reduced more than expected? What if the bay is lost? I would assume there's no going back. The city wouldn't put back the dam. There is basically no real consequence to the city if they are wrong. All consequences would be borne by the residents and the users of the bay. This is why we are especially concerned. The city of Stoughton has said the bay is not within city limits, so it is not their responsibility. However, the city owns the eastern shore of the bay and had annexed the area of the Viking Dog Park, which goes up to the area of the bay. Beyond just being neighbors, there should be concerns over the upstream areas. We share the resource. Changes in one area affects the other. I'm sure that Stoughton would pick up a fuss if suddenly Pleasant Springs had some project to dam or reroute the river and reduce the water flow in Stoughton. People would say, you can't do that. And it's likely legally they'd be right, but somehow the opposite is not the problem. Park design should be taken into consideration of preservation of the bay and other upstream areas. And that evidence is obtained that is objective, understandable, thorough, takes into account the high water and lows and looks like the bay as a whole and not just the channel at B and N. I feel like myself and other residents and users of the bay are going to be opposed to the whitewater park project and the dam removal until such point that we have some real assurances that the bay will not be lost. And then I have an email from Marcia Bond Durant. And she has a few questions, which I don't know. We're not in a position to answer questions tonight as it's not on the agenda. So I think some of these will respond by email, but I'll go through the questions nevertheless. It's unclear to me, the scope of the study has been done to move forward with this project. How many other actual projects similar were studied? In a year of drought, if and when water levels recede, what is the plan? What was the outcome or the resolution? If water never returns to pre-drought levels, what then? Or failure studied as well? And how is information used in determining the project? Going forward, how will the final decision be determined? Community vote? Community comprised of who? Mayor? Will there be any research on the project? And how long will it be shared with the public? What type of burden will this mean to the taxpayers? Where is accountability for this project? Where did the millions of dollars in revenue idea originate? Is there documentation to back this up or is this a projection? Lastly, is this a good time to spend money, whether it be grant or tax levy to go forward when so many persons and businesses are in dire straits? Please read this public portion of the meeting tonight concerning the project. Thank you. So those are all the ones that asked to be read. And then I believe I have four other people that wish to speak tonight. So you're probably tired of listening to me by now. So the first one that signed up to speak is Sharon Mason Boersma. Sharon, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can everyone hear?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sharon Mason Boersma. My address is 243 East McKinley Street, Stoughton. I am here tonight to address the concerns about the demolition of the Stoughton Dam and construction of the Whitewater Park. My concerns are as follows. Contamination in the water if the dam removal took place and prevention and construction of the Whitewater Park was not made right away. The possible adverse impact on property values, especially for those living on the river, that is me. Water level concerns if the dam was removed, water was dropped by three feet and the whitewater park requires the river to be raised by two feet. The livelihood of waterfall inhabitants, vegetation, when man starts to mess with the ecosystem. I know I have heard the arguments made by the DNR that these areas are more vibrant, higher quality in three to five years, maybe. But does man really need to do this? In the city economic development plan of Stoughton for 2017, it states one of natural resource goals on page 27 is for the city to use public acquisition, dedication, or conservation easements to preserve critical natural resource areas, particularly areas along the Yager River, and a policy requiring the cleanup of contaminated sites, not capping, that threaten the public health, safety, and welfare, which violates the policy. One of the objectives in this plan and the economic plan is to protect surface water and groundwater quality and preserve streams, drainage ways, floodplains, wetlands, wildlife habitat, steep slopes, woodland areas, and other natural features. If a short-term seasonal amusement park is built, will it bring revenue the city needs for the budget? Many shoppers frequenting downtown businesses help the traffic flow and alter the millennial population and desire to move to Stoughton? My answer is, I don't think so. What is the date for the demolition of the dam? What is the date for constructing the whitewater park? What's the short term, but more importantly, the long-term benefits and the vision of this? What if it fails? One recommendation I do have is to consider instead an aquatic center built to be used 365 days of the year that would offer an indoor water park, a lap pool, a climbing wall, a golf simulator, basketball, volleyball, racquetball courts, gymnasium, and even packaged birthday presents, or parties rather, for young and old. I suggest to Google the Lundah, L-U-N-D-A, Community Center, a private business-owned facility that is enjoyed by many far and near in the city of Black River Falls, population 3,800. It was built less than five years ago and has excellent ratings. Let's move forward by eliminating township boards and others to pass resolutions about not wanting the Stoughton Dam removal and the build of a whitewater park. Do we need to change the aura of the peaceful Yager River in our city and surrounding area and eliminate the canoe race I enjoy every year for Setnamaya in my backyard? If the ecosystem is working, let's enjoy what we have, not remove it. The existence of the COVID pandemic has certainly taught me that. Council and city administrators, please embrace what is given to us and what we want to keep. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next would be Catherine Foster, I believe.
Yes. This is Catherine Foster. I would like to thank the council members who responded to my email invitation to tour the Mill Pond. A few of you have done the tour. A few more will do so this week. It is my hope that all of you will respond and take the time to see the specific site for which you will be asked to make a decision. There are many questions and concerns regarding dam removal and the whitewater park. It is important that you ask questions and do not rely on interpretation of information solely from those with a whitewater park agenda. I have been reading various studies and find they often confirm my concerns or produce more questions. For example, from the Stoughton Dam Sediment Assessment Report, these questions came to my mind. At what depth in the sediment is the contamination? Might it be better to leave it undisturbed? Is the source of the contamination all old or is some current? The control sample near the footbridge contained elevated concentrations of eight contaminants, which was unexpected by those doing the report. If the dam is removed, it will leave exposed sediment on residential lots in this area. There has been no concern about this by proponents of the whitewater park. Four of 11 sample sites were not tested for PCBs and two other contaminants, including the control site at the footbridge. Why? Why was there no testing near the dam? The study states, the aquatic vegetation, water lilies, et cetera, stabilizes the tested sediment areas. Water lilies also absorb some metals and pesticides. If the contamination is closer to the top of the sediment, capping it with one foot of soil may not provide protection during construction and landscaping of the tested area. Burrowing animals will stir up contaminants also. Capping is not planned until phase two, more than a year after the area is exposed. During that time, contaminated sediment will wash downstream. In the construction of whitewater park features, to dig pools, fill the mill race, and rearrange a peninsula will stir up a massive amount of sediment to be sent downstream. Again, if the contamination is deeper in the sediment, wouldn't it be better to leave it undisturbed by leaving the dam as is? From another study, the ecological impacts of dam removal, I quote, "Following dam removal, much of the sediment may become re-suspended into the free-flowing river. The short-term influx of sediments into the stream flow can damage spawning grounds and negatively impact water, habitat, and food quality. If the sediments contain toxins, impacts from dam removal can be more significant. Contaminants which can attach well to smaller sediments can pose a threat to downstream habitats and fish and wildlife." So you see, this is a very important decision that will have long-term irreversible consequences. It requires that you have multiple sources of information, not just from those advocating what they believe is popular. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next is Mark Hale.
Good evening, Mayor and common council members. Thanks for letting me present. I am Mark Hale, resident of town of Frozen Springs, and I last presented concerns in February of 2020 connected to R29-20 regarding the Whitewater Park Dam Grant Proposal. I'm here to follow up on the heels of recent developments. Since that time, people with substantial Yager River experience, provided animated and compelling feedback, sorry, we have a fire call, to town Pleasant Springs Board members in several meetings. The Friends of the Yager Bay Facebook page had over 500 people sign up within weeks and now at least 641 are attending to developments about the dam and water park. The Town Pleasant Springs Board and the Town Planning Commission voted unanimously to oppose the water park and dam removal as currently proposed in September of 2020. I submit the valid concerns that published in Resolution R2020-06 for you to review. A petition routed a couple of weeks ago gathered around 500 signatures in less than a week opposing the dam removal. I understand at least 100 more signatures have been secured in the last week. My comments, the city has not been adequately transparent in this matter, has failed to bring the Town Pleasant Springs Board and the Town Dunkirk Board to the table to dialogue about Stoughton's plan and identify specific concerns that could be addressed by action. The city has failed to work collaboratively and in concert with the town boards, DNR, Dane County, and other important agencies with the goal of positive outcome for all. I've been told that several common council members have indicated they've not heard any opposition to the water park. Yet all I have heard is opposition and I believe the resolution from the Town Pleasant Springs and the petition give evidence there is substantial concern. There have been inconsistencies in reports of water depth impact in the city as well as the bay north of the city. Professionals outside of the city project have identified concerns as well with the data thus far revealed. There is no evidence of action to consider merits of alternatives proposed to the city, including moving the dam, adding risers, et cetera, to ensure no impact to the water depth levels upstream and in the bay. There is not evidence of contingency planning. Should the city proceed and water levels are impacted as projected by concerned citizens? Contingency planning should be fundamental. You have an opportunity with some grants being denied or delayed to ensure that the i's are dotted, that common sense collaboration occurs with town boards, that compromise is the theme underscored in that the recreation, nature, and beauty of the river and bay are maintained as it has been for nearly 100 years. You had told me last February the project could be further evaluated depending on grant status. I think it is critical you do more homework and evaluate this project further. It would be a huge mistake to seemingly shove this project through come hell or high waters, as the saying goes. Seize the moment to work collaboratively with your neighbors, have informational sessions, put Q and As online, be more transparent for the well-being for all in the greater Stoughton area. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis Kittleson would be next.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? You can.
Super. This is Dennis Kittleson, 109 East Cap Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin. I'm on this for opposition to the dam removal.
I'm sorry.
Pardon?
We're getting a pretty bad echo.
If you're on speakerphone, maybe try to just talk into the phone.
Is this better?
I think so. Keep talking. We'll let you know.
All right, thank you. Dennis Kittleson, 109 East Cap Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin. I'm calling in for opposition to the dam removal. My concern is echoed by everybody else's concerns that were brought up tonight. But I do have a couple other items that I was wondering about. I can't find any information as far as we all know where the ditches are out there with the dog park. If we reduce the water levels, will those ditches then go away? I have a lot of friends that like to ice fish out there and they do spend a fair amount of money in Stoughton for breakfast and lunch and buying bait and other items that they need. Another issue that I have that I would like to have answered sometime is if we drop the water level, are we going to be responsible for reconstructing shoreline banks? One place of business that I want to use, I can't speak for them, but I want to speak for what I'm thinking about there would be the Naughty North Sea. If, for instance, we drop the water level three feet and the channel of that river is out a fair amount of distance from their shoreline, and let's say that it expands out them 15 feet, are we going to ask them to put in 30 feet of fence? 15 on each side in order for them to be able to have their outdoor patio area? So this really has a trickle effect, if that's the case, a trickle effect of having a lot of private people having to spend money because we're making decisions for a small section of the river. There's a lot of people from the townships that are speaking out about this, and I think that we really need to be good stewards. We need to be considerate of the lake, the locks at the lake, all the way down to the dam in Dunkirk, of all the people that live on the shore and that utilize the water area there. I'm just not finding the information that can be concrete enough to say like this is what it's going to be. So those are my concerns and maybe we can get something published so that we can find out really what the end result of that would be. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. And those were all the people that were registered to speak tonight. Next item is, public comment is over. So the next item is the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Would like, anybody like anything moved or changed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business tonight. We do have some new business, and that would be ordinance 22 of 2020. And I'll pull that up, and that's coming from the Utilities Committee. And I would look toward Alder Person Jensen for that one.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 22, 2020 to amend Section 74-15 Parent A and 74-15 Parent B to create Section 74-15 Parent C through E of the City of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the placement of water metering facilities and the replacement of inaccessible metering facilities. This was, this was approved by the Utilities Committee on a seven to zero vote.
It's a first reading, too. So this one's up for a first reading, Greg. Is there anything else you want to add or?
I think maybe I would prefer that if the director is here, that she would have a comment, maybe.
Thank you. Just want to show that this ordinance really is an opportunity, I guess, you know, to really look at non-compliant meter locations. We have a number of configurations out there, and this particularly came out of looking at removing all of the lead for the community and the grant opportunity that we have. But we've got some meters in inaccessible locations that currently don't meet code requirements for those meter locations. And so we wanted to place the ordinance because obviously when a new construction comes in, that construction meets current code requirements. Particularly, this is an issue for access. We have some configurations where they're actually below the basement floor, and so our operators have to actually, you know, lean in and actually look and, you know, change out these meters. It's really an opportunity to get these corrected so that they're not a safety issue. And with the ordinance or with the grant opportunity coming forward, it's an opportunity for those that cost, I guess, incurred for that private side to adjust those meters to be part of that grant opportunity. Any questions related to that?
Okay, hearing no questions. So this is a first reading. If you do have any questions between now and the next council meeting, if you could just direct those questions to Director Weiss, we can get them answered for you. Next item on the agenda would be ordinance 23 of 2020, and this one is also a first reading from Utilities. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 23, 2020 to amend Section 74-2 Parent A and 74-2 Parent B to create Sections 72 Parent G through Parent H of the City of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the replacement of indirect service lateral connections. And this was approved by Utilities, a seven-zero vote. That's a first reading. And I'll let the director again, if you would, Jill, please.
Thank you. Again, this kind of came out of the grant opportunity, but it's really a concern. It's a kind of a, an issue that's been ongoing for a very long time throughout the community. We have a situation where, and unlike any other community that I've had the opportunity to work with or work for, is where we'll have, say, a water service, and that water service will actually provide water to multiple properties. We have one that we actually ran to in Prospect, and there's a single shut-off valve. So if there had been an issue related to that property, it actually served two properties. So if there was a leak or otherwise, or if even the one customer didn't pay and needed to be shut off, both customers ultimately would have been shut off. We have a tremendous amount of these throughout the community, same thing on the sewer side, where there's a configuration where there's a single sewer lateral, but then it branches off and actually serves multiple different properties. Not allowed by code, and does, it's quite problematic for private property owners, and this provides us an opportunity to be able to address and correct these. Do the timings good as we look forward to the lead service grant opportunity to be able to correct these on the water side.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? I see Alder Person Hunt speaking. You're muted.
I was wondering how widespread the circumstances where you have this multiple residents or multiple customers situation, how widespread is that?
Well, it's fairly common. I mean, it's not, and I say that only because I've never really seen it in the other community. I would say, and we've got a situation down on Page Main where there's, you know, a single service and there's multiple properties that are served through that. That's probably our most significant one. That one in particular actually runs through the basement. The first property, the service runs, the water service runs through their basement, and then branches off, and it serves two other properties. In the end of the day, it's probably really, and I can definitely have a count of these for the next meeting, but I'm going to guess that there is probably 20 to 30 throughout the community on the water side. It's probably a little bit more speculative on the sewer side because that service is entirely owned by privately. On the water side, we have a little better handle of how widespread this is. But it's, it's unique. Stoughton, I would say, most communities don't have this issue. Maybe Norwegian kind of nice, so the next property built, and there was no problem to have the next property connect legitimately at the time as we, property owners, take on those properties. It's obviously an issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? All right. So this will be back at the next meeting as well. Next item is R-160 of 2020. This one also comes from Utilities. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 160, 2020 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to authorize Stoughton Utilities to apply for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Private Lead Service Line, LSL, Replacement Program Funding Grant on behalf of the City of Stoughton. I'd move for approval.
Is there a second? Did you catch a second, Holly?
Yeah, it's Lisa.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Person Jensen, go ahead.
Yeah, this is obviously, you know, a good thing. We want to get this grant so that we can get these lead services changed over. So I would hope that the council would be approving this tonight. Jill, do you have anything after you want to add?
I really don't. Ultimately, the grant is basically applied for through the City of Stoughton. So we just wanted to actually have this as an authorization to go forward with it. It's not a requirement of the grant itself, but just really wanted to have the endorsement of the council that this is the direction that they desired us to go.
Any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Next item is ordinance 24 of 2020. This one's a first reading, and this one is coming from Public Works, Alder Person Bieski.
Okay, this is ordinance 24, 2020, amending Section 64-9 Parent F of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to sandwich board signs. Works recommend approval for zero on October 15th, and this is a first reading.
All right. And anything else you want to add to it?
We can let Rodney talk to this one. It's pretty straightforward.
Just expands the area where we allow sandwich board signs in the downtown district. As a pedestrian-oriented signage, it allows expansion of that area between Jefferson and Washington Street in the downtown district. So one block off of Main Street would now be allowed to have the sandwich board signs ancillary to the businesses in those areas.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one?
I did have one, one question about it. I guess it's related to the, to the entire municipal code for that. And are these maybe looked upon less stringently when we're at Seton in my time? Because I know that there are quite a few sandwich boards that go out on Main Street during that weekend.
I can't speak specifically to that, but this really is to allow for the signage by permit to be done within the public right of way, actually, in these areas. I don't dispute the possibility that more of those get put up during that special event. I'm not suggesting that they, they aren't a problem in some cases.
Your Honor, I just have one other question.
Sure. Go ahead, Alder Person.
And I read this, but I may have missed it, but what is the cost for permit for this particular item?
I believe the permit fee for a standard permit for a sign, I believe, is $40.
And I would say that if it's, if it's like the one-time deal at Seton in my, that's pretty excessive, actually. So that's my feeling on it, that, that's, that's an excessive amount of money that we're requiring for somebody to put up a simple sandwich board sign, especially during some parts of the year. So I would, I would object to, I will be objecting to it as currently written with that kind of, with that kind of fee.
I don't know that this is pertaining to the temporary signs that Alder Schumacher was referring to that are going up without permits. This is for the routine installations for signage in front of businesses that are in the downtown district that have historically taken out permits for that fairly routine sign they place out in front of their facilities.
Well, perhaps we need to amend it so we make that clear, that it's not for the temporary signs, especially at things like Coffee Break Festival, which could at some point be uptown or, or Seton in my, which only happens once a year. Where businesses struggle to have people come, and 40 bucks is a lot of money. So I think we should, I think this should be modified to be more clear as to what that permit fee would be and for which, which, which sandwich board signs go up. That's just my thought.
Is that part of this ordinance, Rodney?
The fee structure is not. This identifies the signs and where they can be placed. Certainly, I think the signs he's referring to are ones that oftentimes are not seeking permits for the very temporary situations related to a special event.
So I guess.
So then what happens with, what happens with a sign where, where some people are paying for it and some people aren't? And so it may be very temporary, and how do we distinguish that? And I just think it should be a delineation of whether it's a permanent or, or temporary thing that ordinance that allows for some people to have them, some people not. Some people don't have to pay for them, some people do. And if it's temporary for sure, $40 is excessive.
I think we'd have to take that up at a future committee meeting, Sid. I don't think that's what we're looking at on this ordinance here, and we'll be happy to do that and review that.
Okay. Okay.
We were actually responding in a proactive manner to address a business that's one block off of Main that by current regulations aren't allowed to have a sandwich board sign. So we're certainly trying to accommodate the business in the downtown area that want to function the guidelines or the regulations.
Okay, I've, I've said enough. That's fine.
All right. If you come up with any other questions, let us know. This is a first reading unless somebody wants to waive the rule. Otherwise, we'll be back in two weeks.
I'd like to waive the rules. That way, if one of you are signing up, we could accommodate that.
Okay, so I heard a motion to waive the rules. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Second by President Hirsch. We need a two-thirds vote to waive the rule. All in favor of waiving the rule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
I do oppose because I really want that other issue clarified.
Okay, one opposed. So we've waived the rules, which takes us back. Well, actually, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this change in ordinance for the sandwich board signs.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll side with Alder Borispon on that. We need to certainly address the other temporary sign issue aside from this, this ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions?
But I think, you know, we can amend that later on. I'd really hate if a business right now is requesting to have a sandwich board because they're not getting customers in this time of COVID. I really want to help our businesses out as much as possible, so.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. Just as long as the, the issue doesn't get lost and that it gets taken up by the appropriate committee. Otherwise, I have no reason to, to impede this ordinance change.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll vote in favor of this, just so I'm assured that this is going to be taken up. Because again, the issue, it involves the issue of fairness and a clear delineation of what is a more permanent sandwich board versus a temporary one. I'll, I'll vote in favor, but I do want it, I do want it addressed.
All right, we'll do it. Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next item is R-161 of 2020, and this one comes from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R-161, 2020, approving a revised financial agreement between State of Wisconsin and City of Stoughton for costs for the construction of roundabouts on U.S. Highway 51 at Old Silverado, State Highway 138, and Robey Road scheduled to be constructed in 2020. So move.
Second.
I have a, I have a question, and that is, it was read wrongly, I believe.
Yeah, it's 2022. Is that what you meant?
That's what I meant.
Yep.
Did I not read it, 2022?
I think you said 20.
Okay, then 2022.
That'll work. So we have a motion and a second. Alder Person Schumacher, do you want to elaborate?
These are, just as the contracts had, had come in, this is kind of what, what the bottom line of that is. And I guess either Rodney or Jamin can chime in on that as well.
Yeah, I can certainly shed some light on it. This is the 90% plans that the DOT has put together. These additional suggestions for city cost share were identified as part of the 90% plans. The extension of sidewalk to McComb Road, additional colored coloring to concrete that we've previously approved as part of a resolution, promoting that in certain areas out there, some minor utility adjustments, and then making the shared use sidewalk function more as a a larger ten foot path in between the roundabout areas would be accommodated as part of this as well. The plan sheets that are included here show the colored portions of that in in the back section of the Roby Road Roundabout. So essentially between the round or roundabout radiuses, you'll have a wider sidewalk section that will accommodate future shared use path connections to them as well. The Public Works Committee met on this as well as the Finance Committee, both are endorsing it. There isn't a need to increase the proposed CIP budget for this. This falls within the original estimates for that project, and therefore both committees recommended recommended approval of this amendment.
Rodney, I have a question. Does this also include the the bike lane that kind of on the outer side of the roundabouts?
Yeah, that's really what it's attempting to do. You'll recall, we we've deemed these wider sidewalks as opposed to the shared use path, but they'll be able to function in these areas as a ten foot wide segment that will in the future connect to shared use paths that would extend farther down fifty one and or Roby and or Dear Point Drive.
So where would they actually cross fifty one?
The crossings are, there are crossing points in in the medians that are shown in the plans in the middle here. This happens to be the Roby Road one. So certainly that's where they would be able to cross as a pedestrian. The bikes also have the ability to utilize the lane in Wisconsin, but these areas have ramp off and ramp off, ramp off and ramp on location, facilitate the bike movement outside of the travel lane through the roundabout if they'd like to as well.
Okay, great, thanks. I just want to make sure it wasn't forgotten, but I'm sure you were on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this one? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R one sixty two of twenty twenty. This one comes from Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
R one sixty two twenty twenty to authorize proper city official to amend all existing senior center annex lease agreements to have the same termination slash renewal date of September thirtieth. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
So of the five lease agreements that we have for the senior center annex, all this is doing is resetting a termination or renewal date for September thirtieth of twenty twenty one, whereas the five existing leases had different renewal dates on them. So it makes the administration of it a little bit cleaner. So this isn't terminating or anything like that. All it is is just setting them all to the same same date.
And and I have a question on that.
Go ahead, Alder Boris.
Okay, the lease lease agreements involve two parties, one the leasing and the leasing. And I'm just wondering if any of these would conflict with with termination renewal dates, you know, as to whether or not we're going to be getting any pushback from the the people who are leasing that property. So I I just wonder if that that has been broached with the property tenants.
Alder Person Schumacher or Director Fidel, who would like to answer Alder Boris' question?
Well, I think we need to have the the council action or council approval first before we can approach them about resetting that date on there.
Well, I certainly would disagree on that, that that they should be apprised of what we are at least intending to do before we do it.
I tend to agree with Mr. Boris.
Who was that?
That was your friends, Sid.
Alder Myeski.
I can't, I can't believe that, but yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I I think Alder Borisma is absolutely correct. You know, we're we're doing this and we're going to blindside and say, oh, by the way, we have council approval already, so it's it's a done deal. Your your protests are are moot. You know, would we do business?
Well, I think this is to start the conversation.
Logically think that this is better for administration. I don't really quite understand why it's better for administration. Could you explain that portion to me?
This isn't necessarily to, this is to start the conversation with them. This isn't necessarily to say we're gonna, like you say, blindside you with, here's a new date and deal with it. That's not what what this is intended to do.
Can can you, can you explain to me how this is easier for administration?
Well, I I think what we have is we have multiple tenants there. They all have different agreements, and what we're trying to do is sync them up. And then if it's determined that there's going to be renewal, then we can make all the agreements consistent. And if it's determined that there's going to be non-renewal, we can do the same. Right now, we have, I think, four or five different tenants with different agreements, and this puts them, you know, pretty much all in sync, and this would be the first stop. Does that answer your question?
No, I mean, it was stated that this was for easy easier ease of administration. How is that any easier for administration? I mean, you have to negotiate with each of these, each of these individually anyway. I'm not, I'm not seeing the economy of this.
This this involves transparency. I think, again, we've we've heard about transparency on on council, and I think we need, we need to be transparent, especially with those people who are working directly with the city and actually paying us monies. So I think we need to, we, I think we need to at least approach people that we have a relationship with to, you know, to say, how does this square with you and is it going to work? And, you know, just just the the normal sort of civil things that we should do is is approach the we're leasing these properties. So I I, you know, I think it's good to have it all at the same time. I think that if it works out that way, but I think for transparency, we shouldn't just pass a resolution that that puts a burden, a potential burden on a person leasing our property. I think it's just, I think it's a no brainer.
Actually, I agree with Tom said I had a problem with this because, I mean, to be truthful, the reason why we're doing this is because of what Cindy McGlinn had said during our budget meeting that at some point in the future, the senior sitter might want to expand into that area. And I do believe that it's important to let the tenants know that that might be coming down the line at some point. And that is the reason why we want all con, you know, contracts the same. I I totally agree. I was going to mention that before, that, you know, it does have to be transparent. We have to let them know that at some point your lease might not be renewed because we need that area, that space, so.
I sat in on a finance committee meeting. This is Joyce Takowski. I have a note that I made to myself that says that this was recommended by Attorney Dregney as an approach, and it will be explained to tenants first. Am I correct in that, Jamin? Did I note that correctly? Do you recall at the meeting at six?
Yes, yes, that's correct. We had a long-winded conversation with Attorney Dregney and one of his associates. The reason this is being rushed through is because the first lease is up on January first, and we have to give sixty days notice. The final lease term in this annex is ending on the thirtieth, so that's why we chose the September thirtieth. That would give us a number of months to work through what Director McGlinn wants to do with the senior center annex.
I I'm glad to hear that. You're finally coming out with the true reason for the the sinking of all the, all of the rentals and not using ease of administration as an excuse. Thank you.
Well, it will use the administration.
Okay, so ease of administration was an oversimplification of of what that was.
Don't insult people.
So we have a motion on the table. Are there any other questions and comments? All right, here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No, no.
No. I think I heard four no's. You guys want a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Holly, when you're queued up, can you do a roll call, please?
Boris.
For the reasons stated, no.
Paravello.
Aye.
Doom.
Aye.
Kylie.
No.
Hirsch.
No.
Hunt.
No.
Jensen.
Sorry, I was muted. I.
Lagaki.
Aye.
Myeski.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
And Takowski.
Aye.
There's five no's and seven yeses that motion carries.
All right, thank you, Holly. Next item is R one sixty three of twenty twenty, and this one is, I mean, from a recommendation from the committee of the whole of Council President Hirsch.
Oh, I lost my, just a second. That just collapsed.
All right, it's on the screen, if you can see the screen.
Yep, R one sixty three twenty twenty authorizing the appropriate city officials to enter into agreement with the elders to begin the process to amend TIF four to allow for the sharing with TIF five and TIF eight. And I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Council President Hirsch.
This, as you remember, we were discussing during our committee of the whole meeting last week to, because of TIF four closing, I believe, next year, and Jamin, you can correct me. They have a, we have the ability to use some of the monies from TIF four to share with other TIFs in that area that are not generating enough income to cover their costs. And so that's what this is, and Jamin, you can probably explain it a lot better than I can.
Well, you pretty much nailed it on the head. The only correction would be TIF four isn't closing next year, but the expenditure period is up. So we're going to attempt to expedite this amendment through prior to March twenty first or twenty, I believe.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on this one? Here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R one sixty four of twenty twenty, and that one comes from Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
R one sixty four twenty twenty authorizing and directing proper city official to enter into the First Amendment to the access agreement with Uniroil Global Engineered Products, known as Uniroil. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, a second, I believe, by Johnson, Alder Person Schumacher.
So in Uniroil's first round of testing on the property six hundred South Fourth Street, they had found some levels of one of the contaminants that they were looking at and wished to track that a little bit further. So they would like to drill a few more test samples out and analyze those as well.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, Brett, do you know about this plasticizer and it being moved and what possible environmental or health conditions it may cause?
That one would be the, it's it's, I would say, the the lesser, the evils of the ones that they were looking for in there as they have it classified as kind of a non-toxic. It 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 should be a lighter than water, so it should kind of float on the top of the of the water table. As far as the the biological impacts, it's it's hard to say with that one. And I think at least in, I'm sure in California, they would say that it causes cancer, but I'm not sure what the other, any other studies that have been done with that one.
I was just wondering if this is like a nano particle that could bioaccumulate, you know, over time, I know it's these small particles that we don't have a lot of information on yet. And I was just didn't know that that is what we're looking at.
It would just be a straight chemical, just a straight aqueous chemical. So I would think that it does have a tendency to accumulate, but it would only accumulate just in in an organic phase.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Good, Brett, put that in English.
I can draw some diagrams up.
All right, here are no other questions or comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is is coming from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
This is, which one is this one?
Discussion on action regarding funding up to twenty thousand dollars from contingency.
Oops, okay, I see it, got it. Let's see, so the discussion and possible action funding up to twenty thousand from contingency for legal representation for liquor license proceedings and authorizing proper city officials to hire attorney Al Reuter. That was a resolution, so it is so moved.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that one, Alder Person Schumacher?
Out of the contingency, we've had a couple of different. Um, out of the contingency, we've had a couple of different kind of standing items that were in there. And one of them was based on liquor license dealings and then another with, uh, with Viking lanes. This is to, to cover the, the legal costs potentially for, uh, the next lick, next round of liquor license proceeding. In the first time, we had guessed it would be about $10,000. And in actuality, it was closer to 20. So we've increased the amount to 22 so that we're not overrunning, uh, what we would have budgeted out of contingency.
I have a quick question, Your Honor.
I'll go ahead, all the person Borsma.
So the, will this have anything whatsoever to do with, uh, Shakers?
Yeah, this would be the money that we would use, uh, for, to be represented in that case, would be my understanding, Attorney Dragney. Did you want to comment on that?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to point out that we had a very unusual situation in the past where this thing, we had legal representation probably in excess of this money where it, uh, where there was a recommendation in public service that we, safety that we revoke a license. And at the last minute, I had a city council meeting and it came up. The, uh, various members of the, of council, uh, opposed this, um, a plan to revoke. And in fact, uh, asked that it be suspended. I had a fit about it. And, uh, because I thought it should be revoked, especially with the recommendation. So, um, I think, uh, for the danger of, uh, of nepotism, I would, I would more likely want my six-year-old grandson to represent us in this situation because I think if we're using another $20,000 for pretty much the same issue, um, I, I think this is like not good use of, uh, taxpayers' dollars.
All right, well, I just want to comment that we have to be cautious. I don't think we want to be talking about the case. You know, what we're looking for is authorization so we can, you know, proceed with the latest, uh, incident that occurred. Attorney Dragney, is there anything you want to add? I mean, I don't know how far we can discuss this.
Well, I, as I, so we've got the items on the agenda. I think the next item on the agenda is a complaint that Chief Luck has filed with City Clerk. Is that correct? Holly?
Yes. So the next item on the agenda is the issuance of the summons to summon the liquor license agent to the, uh, public safety hearing, which includes a copy of the complaint. So all that information is in your packet.
Okay, so the, the chief of police has filed a complaint with the city clerk that contains charges relating to Shakers and seeks revocation of the license. And so the item that's before you now asks for authorization to, um, I guess, uh, I don't have her up on the screen, but to make funds available to, to provide for the legal expenses of those proceedings. Now, uh, the, the last time there was a complaint filed that resulted in this type of a proceeding, uh, it was my advice that the city council be represented by legal counsel. My firm will be prosecuting the case if there, if the charges move forward. And there is a due process issue that requires, that prevents, uh, the same lawyer from both prosecuting the case and advising the counsel. So that's why last time, um, the advice was to the council that if you want legal advice, you should, you should get it. Uh, if the council is willing to move forward with a proceeding like this without legal representation, that's a decision you can make. Um, but the recommendation is that you should have legal representation. As I recall, the council, uh, in the last proceedings of this type was very well satisfied with the legal representation that it received from, um, Mr. Reuter. And I believe was also very well satisfied that the lawyers representing the chief did, uh, a good job. And that is not the reason that the council made the decision it made. It had nothing to do with any, uh, view that anyone had, as I recall, that there was any, a lack of adequate legal representation.
Could have said it better myself.
Tim, as, as Chair of the Public Safety, and this will be coming before my committee, uh, relatively quickly here. I would not be comfortable without the representation, without having Mr. Reuter, uh, help us. It, it, it would be, it would be foolhardy to try it, in my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so I believe we have a motion on the table. Um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion carries. Um, I, item number 14 is, uh, I guess this one's coming from the chief, so I, I don't know how we want to introduce this. Um.
I think actually the, the, I'd like the clerk to address this. The chief has filed charges with the clerk. So Holly, please let the council know what, uh, they need to do.
Um, so what's in your, on the agenda and on the packet is to issue a summons um, in regards to the complaint filed by Chief Luck in the consideration of the revocation of the Class B Reserve combination license held by Shaker Saloon LLC. So what we're asking the council to do is to approve the issuance of the summons to the agent. So we can set up the, or so we can have the here revocation, revocation hearing. So the summons and a copy of the complaint are in the packet.
And Holly, would that be for a specific date? That summons be for a specific date for the Public Safety Committee?
Yes, it's included if the mayor wants to bring up summons, um, in the packet, it is for Thursday, November 5th at 6:00 PM. The, the information for the meeting is included in the summons.
I so moved that the summons be served.
Thank you. Now a little second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. That's all we had on the agenda for this evening.
Both of you agree?
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, you Bob.